We will be accepting a maximum of two live questions. So mostly we'll be prepared yet.
Okay, are we planning to go till eight or when is this over?
Yes, we're planning to go until eight.
Okay.
And can I also ask the questions that you ask will be for each of us that it wouldn't? Or are there questions that are, oh, this one is for Michelle and nobody else has to answer it? Or we all answer the same questions?
Yeah, everyone will be answering all of the questions. I think we are live, so we'll wait a couple of minutes to start.
I think we'll give it like just like two more minutes because after you go live, sometimes it takes like a couple of minutes for it to show up on the YouTube feed. Yeah, we'll start at six oh three. We'll start in one more minute. Okay, everyone, we'll get started. We'll get right to it. Thank you, everyone, for making it out to the Fremont Board of Education candidate Town Hall for the upcoming November third general election. The Youth Letten Hall presented by Surfboard E. and Jen Up Fremont. We're going to be your moderators for this evening's Town Hall. My name is Alvin. I'm currently seventeen. I'm a rising senior at Mission San Jose High School, and I'm part of Jen Up. Zion, I'll throw it over to you.
Hi, my name is Zion Khan. I'm a rising junior at Irvington High School, and I'm part of Surfboard E. and the Student Board Member of FUSD.
We're super excited that everyone can make it out today as well as the candidates for making it out today. For giving folks the option and the opportunity to hear about y'all's platforms and what you guys are planning to do and the change you plan to bring about. If you're elected the next school board member for your representative districts. We'll get right into it. This Town Hall is completely youth-led. And so all the questions that are going to be asked you guys were collected via student forms from all five of Fremont Unified School Districts, five high schools. So these are all student inputs and student concerns on what they see as very important topics of discussions and concerns that need to be addressed in the upcoming school board races. So Zion, I'll pass it over to you for the community guidelines.
Thank you, Alvin. Can you go to the next slide? Alright, so the way that the candidate is, sorry, the forum is going to work is that each candidate will have one minute per question. Except for the opening and closing statements where they will have ninety seconds. Live questions will be accepted through the YouTube comment section. We'll have a maximum of two. So make sure throughout the forum, if you're watching, please comment questions that we can ask the candidates. Next, all candidates should be civil and respectful, and as Alvin said, we are nonpartisan in this election and not supporting any one candidate. So with that, we can get right into it. We're going to start off with an opening statement. Our speaker order will be Trustee Campbell, Ms. Deng, Ms. Kalapala, Ms. Shen, Mr. Prasad, and Trustee Burke. So, Trustee Campbell, take it away.
Thank you so much for doing this. I think this is an excellent opportunity for us as candidates to hear a student voice and to understand the importance of issues that are impacting our students in Fremont Unified. So I thank you for this opportunity to additionally share with you why I would like to be reelected to Fremont Unified School Board. I've had the pleasure to serve students and their families for the past eight years and serving the Fremont community for over twenty-four years. As president of the school board and a community leader, I remain committed to working to ensure quality education for all of our students. While we are faced with some additional challenges due to distance learning, COVID- nineteen. In the history of our schools, we need experienced, knowledgeable, strong leaders on the Fremont Education Board of Education. And I believe that I am that strong, committed leader. I will work with accountability and transparency, quality, equity, education for all of our students, and of course fiscal solvency. The COVID- nineteen has positioned us in a way that we have to ensure that we meet all of our students' needs to mitigate learning loss. And I'm committed to working to ensure that we do mitigate learning loss for our most at-promise and at-risk students. We are committed to weekly engagement logs that gets us to attendance because attendance is going to be very important during this time. So again, I thank you so much for this opportunity to be able to share with you why I believe that I should be reelected. Thank you for your pending vote.
Ms. Deng.
Hello, my name is Yajin Zan, and I am your candidate for District Four. And first of all, thank you so much for the student Surfboard to organize this event. And that's the great example of excellence showing for the students. And I have been a resident in Fremont for sixteen years, and I'm a parent of two teenager kids. And I love this city. And I have been trained as a scientist and working high-tech for quite many years. And later on, become a successful business owner. So with my analytical skills and business experience and expertise and also and skills in collaboration, negotiation, and seeking consensus, and I believe that we will reach an effective and efficient solution for our school district. So that we can again become a invigorating learning place for all the students to reach their full potential. And I'm very excited for the possible new adventure in my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalapala.
Good evening. Thank you, Surfboard, the student group, for hosting this informative discussion. For those who don't know me, I'm Jansy Kalapala, and I'm excited to be running for the Board of Education for the Area Four. As a parent of five young children who are attending the Fremont Public Schools, education is certainly a priority for me. So who live, I lived in Fremont for seventeen years, and I volunteered in many capacities locally. So through my volunteer work as a PTA and volunteer in the school classroom, I have become passionate about the quality of education our children receive. I have been part of the PTA for more than eight years and now taking progressively more substantial roles. The last, if you see, the last four years, I've been worked as a president and executive committee vice chair and co-chair respectively. And I have attended the Board of Education meetings from past three years and bring the issues, school issues, to the board's attention and raising the leaders in the classrooms and working with the students. I believe my participation has prepared me to make meaningful contribution as a member of board. Being an effective member requires collaboration and creative thinking to ensure our resources are invested, our classrooms, that our tax dollars are used effectively and efficiently. One of the most important skills is I am in a doctorate in healthcare leadership and management. So my leadership skills is like in my work experience as a VP of Services Company and serving different organizations.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Shen.
Hello, hi, I'm Lucy Shen. I'm running for Fremont School Board in Area Five to give back to this community that raised me. I believe I'm the right person to serve as a bridge between parents, teachers, and FUSD staff since this district serves many first-generation immigrant parents such as my own. And as a former FUSD student, I know firsthand what it's like to go through Fremont schools and appreciate our strengths while still seeing where we have a lot of room to grow. This has not been an easy time. COVID- nineteen has severely changed our educational system. And that's why I'm committed to solving our most pressing needs and reflecting that in our budget decisions. My first priority will always be the health and safety of all of our students, parents, teachers, and staff. I'll make sure that everyone has access to the resources and the support they need for remote learning and to return safely to our campuses. My second priority will be to make school district information and processes more transparent and to make providing feedback to the school district easier for everybody, including students. Heaven knows it was hard for me. And I worked closely with parents on a curriculum task force and strongly believe in communicating with and supporting all of our stakeholders. I've always strongly believed in service, and so I'm here to give back to the community that raised me and to make sure that the next generation of students who go through Fremont schools are supported and feel empowered to succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Prasad.
Thanks, thanks Surfboard for creating this forum. It's an important part that you're playing as students here as well. So as my tagline says, I will be your voice, the student's voice. And I'm running for from District Five. So as a trustee, I would continue to have a single-point focus, which is to develop well-rounded students. And the well-rounded students is defined as your success, as you define it. And this will be supported by my partnership with the teachers, with administrative staff that I have a long-term experience working with as a PFA president for four years. We did, we did a lot of work together. Now, my executive role in business has given me a lot of experience dealing with large teams, multicultural teams, and sensitivity to the, to those multicultural environments. And also how to succeed in this COVID environment. So I want to bring in all of that experience to FUSD for us to be able to succeed together. Now, with diversity and with troubles comes opportunity. So let's learn from all of this and make Fremont the best place for students to study and succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Burke.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to participate in this forum. Four years ago, this was a highlight of the campaign season. Although we can't look out into the audience, I know you, our students, are more engaged than ever before. It has been an honor to work with students in my tenure on the school board. A hallmark of my work on the board has been listening to student voice. Whether it was regarding health and puberty education or changing the school calendar, I believe a school board member has to be responsive to their stakeholders, whether they vote or not. More recently, I was invited to participate in the microaggressions and mental health panel discussions at both Kennedy and Mission. While listening, I was struck by how far we have come and how far we have yet to go. While we have done some work to address concerns regarding the mental health of our students, it is clear that we have not done enough to address the systemic racism that exists and permeates our classrooms. I also heard that solving the problems in our schools is going to take more than a panel discussion. The discussions were starting points in a call to action by three important stakeholders in FUSD. The parents, the educators, and the students themselves. Each collective group acknowledged their respective role in creating an untenable environment. We now have the opportunity to hit the pause button. I want to be part of the change. As a parent of a current FUSD student, I want to know that the difference we make today will impact my child's experience and those of all current and future FUSD students. I look forward to answering your questions this evening, and I'm running for trustee Area Five. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, all the candidates for your wonderful opening statements. I will now hop into the selection of questions we've chosen for tonight. Once again, I'd like to reiterate to all the participants today as well, as well as all the audience members watching that all of these questions were curated and cultivated from student submissions from across all of five Fremont Unified School Districts, high schools. The first question will be answered in this order: Mrs. Kalapala, Mrs. Burke, Mr. Prasad, Mrs. Zhang, Mrs. Campbell, and Mrs. Shen. The question is, how will you support special education, English learners, and unhoused students if you are elected as a school board trustee? You each have one minute. Mrs. Kalapala, go ahead. I believe you're muted.
Okay, so as a board member, and I worked in the schools as like after-school programs, the after-school clubs. So I know the students who are, it is like back of the education programs, like so math or English. So we need to, as we need to bring that a lot of resources, the parents who are not able to help the students in the homes where the people who are working, the parents who are working for the two-time jobs for them. It is like we need to provide extra resources from the district and from the schools to improve the skills in the, for the students from the elementary to the high school. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Next up, let's have Mrs. Burke go. I believe you're also on mute.
Thank you. And I'm Ms. Burke rather than Mrs. Burke. So, or you can call me Michelle, and that's fine too. Either, all three of those groups warrant a lengthier discussion than one minute, but specifically for special ed students, we have piloted inclusion classrooms throughout the district, and it's time to expand on our inclusion program. I think we have teachers and we have parents who are very, very interested in that expansion. For our English learners, our teachers, most of our teachers have been trained in what's called GLAD strategies. And we would need to expand that training across the board as well. So that if you are teaching science or if you're teaching social studies, you also have the capacity of bringing English learner development skills for instruction. And then finally, for unhoused students, we are fortunate in that our student support services tracks every student and connects with them to make sure that they have all of the resources they need, whether it's technology, hotspots, food, et cetera. And we make sure that students can stay in the schools that are considered their home schools.
Thank you so much, Trustee Burke. Next up, let's have Mr. Prasad go. And just to clarify, Zion will be timing this round of questions.
So for special needs, special ed students, there are two things that need to be done. One is, one is to provide them the resources that they need for their success and speech therapy. Additional speech therapy is one of the things that is very, very necessary to be added. And then we are also limiting their ability to actually excel by providing, by not including them in some of their advanced curriculum options. So we need to expand the scope for them there. For the English learners, obviously getting them more help in terms of language training and also finding, finding opportunities for them to work with peers in order to learn would be useful. And for the unhoused, definitely the resources and food should be the last, last of their concerns. So we need to make, make sure that happens. But during this COVID time, they, we may actually try to open up some of the classrooms where they could come and work with safe distancing so that they are not, they are not stuck with their, their, not ideal environment at home.
Thank you so much. Next up, we'll have Mrs. Zhang go.
Okay, so in this special challenging time, imagine that, you know, regular family would already facing a very challenged situation. You know, parents has to deal with work at home and different kids, lunch at different time. And just imagine, you know, kids, you know, with, with financial difficulties or learning difficulties. So I think that if before we help them, now we need to pay, we need to provide, you know, two times, three times effort to pay attention to them, to ask them how they are doing, to follow up with them. And, and then doing analysis to see whether our solution in helping them works. So I just got myself a new job and become a chairman for Honor Site Council. And so we are proposed that we should follow up with them and doing a survey just to see after months, to see how students are doing, how those students in challenging situation, how they, especially how they're doing, and then come up with a, with an effective solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, let's have Mrs. Campbell go.
You, these are some very good questions in terms of special ed students. I agree with trustee Burke, the inclusion program has been very successful. All of the parents that I have spoken to who have their kids in an inclusion program are very excited about it. Our teachers are really excited about continuing and expanding that program. We have to make sure that we have all of the individual education plans for each of our special, special ed kids. The IEPs, the 504 plans, as long as we have those, we know exactly what kinds of services we need to be offering. Our McKinsey Vento law requires that we provide services to all of our unhoused students. We just need to, and we have a student support services employee who works specifically with the unhoused families to understand their needs. So I'm really excited that we are continuing to work with, in deliberately targeting that group. Additionally, with the, the English language learners, I think one of the most important things to have is language in their home language translation so that their parents can be aware of the kinds of opportunities that are available for them in the schools. Thank you.
And lastly, for this question, let's end with Ms. Shen.
This pandemic has definitely exposed all of the inequities to access to resources in our school district, for sure. And also how honestly segregated our city is. For me, I think it's important really to prioritize these students, specifically English language learner, special needs students, low-income students who may qualify for free and reduced-price lunch, unhoused students. These are all the students that, to me, should be prioritized as we are considering our back-to-school plan. Because distance learning is such an additional challenge, not just in terms of access to resources, but also learning models of how you actually learn through Zoom, for example. It's just difficult for many students, especially special needs students and unhoused students for facilities-related reasons. I've spent a long time volunteering with a great org called Stand Up For Kids, and we've worked a lot with at-risk and unhoused youth. And I do definitely want to emphasize this idea that they should get priority access to facilities when we do start reopening, as long as those facilities are safe. And also hiring more paraeducators rather than laying them off because they're so important in the process of having a flexible, integrated educational program for our special needs students.
Perfect.
Right. We'll be moving on to our next question. What do you think is the biggest problem that Fremont students face today? How would you approach the problem? And the order will be Mr. Prasad, Mrs. Campbell, Ms. Shen, trustee Burke, Ms. Kalapala, and Ms. Deng. So, Mr. Prasad.
Well, so if you look at the microaggressions panel, that I suppose you were a big part of as well. Mental health, mental stress, and the pressures are enormous on students. And that, to me, is, is the biggest problem that the students are facing. And we have to, we have to deal with it in a more constructive way. The reasons to, that happens are multifold. Maybe they are not getting the courses they want, maybe they are being pressured into taking courses that they don't, that they cannot handle. Maybe they are having a situation where they do not want to go to college, but the only curriculum available is college bound, right? So, so there are many, many such factors that are driving, driving stress in the system. So creating awareness from elementary school level so that students can recognize this problem and be able to understand this is happening and be able to express it to, to the, to the counselors as well as their families would go a long way in solving this problem.
Thank you, trustee Campbell.
Well, certainly, there are so many COVID- nineteen, and this pandemic has created disruptions in our learning environment that are, that we have never seen before. We're hearing about mental health concerns with students leaving from isolation, lack of physical contact, lack of really protective factors and, you know, including not having places to study adequately, being, not having technology, unmanaged substance abuse problems, depression, suicidal ideation, social isolation, I mentioned that before, increased food insecurity, I mean, the list is long. And we are working on ways in which we can mitigate the impacts of all of these struggles from being, you know, sheltered in place at home because it has, it has created some, like Ms. Shen said, it's shining a light on some areas that we really need to work on. So we just need to tackle the most pressing problems first. Because, as I said, the list goes on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shen.
As a former MSJ student myself, I definitely also want to answer mental health since I personally suffered through so much of that. But I can only imagine how much these issues have been exacerbated by the distance learning model. My, really quick, my three points for how to, we can better, how we can better support student mental health is to hire diverse and bilingual mental health professionals who can also work with parents and communicate more efficiently. And to reinstate our social worker program that was cut in 2014. And also supporting student-led initiatives like the mental health panel started by Jen Up. A common thread I'm seeing in a lot of student conversations I've been having revolve around students not feeling like they have a way that they can be heard. There's no complaint system that they, there's no formal way to submit complaints about problems going on. That includes mental health issues, that includes those Instagram accounts that we've seen pop up about MSJ and Irvington stories. Students shouldn't feel like they have to go rogue so that they can be heard by an administration or by their parents. There should really be a formal support system for them. And so that, that's really important to me, especially where we have so many complications and confusions during the distance learning model.
Thank you, trustee Burke.
Thank you. So we have some issues that are popping up because of COVID, but we also have some issues that have existed for a while that still need, that need to be addressed. And as people have pointed out, they've been highlighted. So first of all, our curriculum does not reflect who our students are. So we need to address that, and we have talked about moving forward with our curriculum instruction and embedding ways, or embedding ways for our students to see themselves reflected in the books that or embedding ways for our students to see themselves reflected in the books that they're reading, in the text. And we can go outside of the standard curriculum and bring in more resources. Safe schools is hugely important, whether it's to be physically safe or to be socially and emotionally safe. And because of that, we have pushed for having counselors down at the, at the elementary level and then making sure that our high schools can also resource with community-based organizations to make sure that mental health supports are available. But I agree with Ms. Shen that we need to expand that pool. In addition, we have access to resources. So we know that there's a disparity and then not all students have the same access. So we need to address that very soon.
Thank you. Ms. Kalapala. I believe you're on mute.
So the COVID-19 is definitely is one of the biggest issue right now we need to address because it has been, brought a lot of changes in our education system and the learning process. And, but thanks for our teachers and the students and the parents who are quickly adapted the whole system. But there are still some holes we need to address that it is like the parents who are working full-time, they need to. And therefore the kids, those who don't have help for them and for them, definitely we need to help them. And that need, a problem need to address. And another issue is like, as Michelle Burke said, we call it as a diversified curriculum. But we, we diversified community and our schools has a lot of diversity. But still our curriculum need to change according to the diversity needs. That is one thing we need to address also. And the other one, the, is like the, as Shannon and Michelle Burke said, that mental health issues, that is one of the most. So we have a counselors, but that is not enough counselors. But still we have in elementary school levels, they have, we have issues to need to address with anxiety problems and the suicidal thoughts and there are, so we need.
Thank you.
I'm not able to see your timer, so that's what. Okay.
Oh, have to change your view to gallery so you can see everybody.
Yes, I did it, but still I'm not able to.
You know, you can't see Alvin right now?
If you try pinning my video on Zoom instead when I'm
Okay.
recording time.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Zoom difficulties, everyone. New age, new, new, new technological age.
Yeah, this is also one of the issue we are facing now. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Lastly, for this question, we have Ms. Ting.
This difficult situation just to make some challenging issues more obvious and, and depressing. And definitely mental health because kids are stuck at home and they feel isolated. And they are also boredom, they don't know what to do. And maybe some classes are too simple or too difficult. And I think there is a several aspects of it. Let's see, academically, we need to provide more flexibility. And some students, they are bored, so we need to give them some project-based program so kids can work together. And that way we can solve this isolation, social contact and support among peers. And for other students, we need to really pay attention and again, attention and care to reach out. And that's academically. And then emotionally, certainly we need more counselor and, and assistant. And thirdly, it's a physical, that how we can maintain the kids to be strong. And we need to encourage them, go out, exercise, walk the dog and help parents cook, clean, whatever that is needed. And thirdly, also, you know. Okay.
Thank you. Alvin will be asking the next question. Perfect. And just to make the timing a bit easier, what we'll do is Zion and I will be rotating off each round to track the time depending on who's doing the question. So for this next round, Zion will be raising the placards on the time. So if you want to go to gallery view or pin him, make sure you do that for this next round of questioning. Again, we're sorry about the difficulty, you know, seeing at the time thing. Zoom definitely presents some new challenges to how political campaigns are on, to say the least in this digital age. Perfect. The next question is, how would you address the issue of some high schools offering courses that others do not? The order for this question will be Ms. Shen, Mrs. Kalapala, Mrs. Zhang, Trustee Campbell, Trustee Burke, and then Mr. Prasad. Ms. Shen, we'll start with you.
This is so personal to me, honestly, because I was a four-year theater student at MSJ. And now I realize our theater department is no longer in existence, which makes me even more jealous of the Irvington Theater Magnet Arts Program. I, I do think that the solution partially will be creating more flexible options so that our students can take classes that are off campus or take advantage of magnet arts programs or magnet programs at all. For example, MSJ, I think was a, might still be a Japanese magnet. So allowing some flexibility in student course selection as the credits go back to their high school diplomas is really important because it will allow us to, despite limited funding, be able to offer a larger array of coursework. Because we have a loany college nearby, we have the ROP. All of these are great options. And if only we had more flexibility and the options to take these classes, which in a more restrictive format, which is what we're living with now, it's just not possible because we have to graduate too. So really, I think the focus should be on letting students take what they want and are interested in instead of taking classes just so they can graduate on time.
Next up, we have Mrs. Kalapala.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Yep. The question is, how would you address the issue of some high schools offering courses that others do not?
Yes, this is again the question regarding to the equity. So it is like, yes, a lot of high schools, like for, if you take an example of Irvington High School, we don't have the AP classes. So last two years back, we have, they have removed the APs and some schools have it, so the parents. So the thing is like to bring all of the, we know the, there is a reason for, to remove the TAP classes and special classes from the other schools is like regarding a lack of proficient staff and we lack of the students who are registering into the classes. But there are small, as Shen addressed, that we have a lot of the community colleges where they can, student can go and take the classes. And if whatever they are interested in, it is about the MBROP and the Oloney College. It is having the lot of, a variety of classes where the students can be proficiented. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Mrs. Zhang go.
In my opinion, I think there is one main reason, I mean, one main reason for that. And we need a flexible policy. We need to provide a diverse program. And also we need to allow kids to go to different campuses and the college and ROP to take the class they need. And so for AP class, yes, I mean, it's a disappointment. And then there was so many restrictions that kids cannot take this at certain time. I would like to remove all that. So kids can challenge themselves if they want, or they can take arts, drawing, cooking and at ROP. So that's how we support a diverse population and students. Thank you. Yes. I saw that you gave me the number. I thought that my time is up. Is that, is that?
Yes, thank you. Next up, we have Trustee Campbell.
That's a, that's a great question. And I think we struggle with that as school board members all the time to be able to offer a variety of different programs at each of the schools. I think the challenge that we face is often there's not enough students enrolling in the class to be able to have a teacher. It just doesn't justify, justify it in terms of, you know, budget. Hiring teachers for these special classes is also difficulty. As you know, the state of California, across the nation, is having teacher shortage. So we're struggling with how we can get teachers to be able to do some of the wonderful things that we'd like them to be able to do, particularly in math and science. It's very difficult to find math and science teachers these days. And again, I mentioned the budget challenges. If we, if, if we offer a class and not enough students participate, we can't have a class of 10 people, those 10 students. So those are some of the challenges that we face in trying to do what we know that the, the families would, would, are asking us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Trustee Burke go.
Thank you. One of the first things I think that we can do is work to reevaluate our course requirements for our high school students while keeping in mind the A through G requirements for UCs and CSU admissions. And I think that would help us to really see, get a better picture of what student, and do a survey with students to see what they're really interested in. Others have mentioned the Oloney Connections Program that we have as well as MBROP. And I think those are opportunities that we can take better advantage of and make them more well-known throughout our high schools. And finally, I've said this before, but with adversity comes opportunity. And what we've learned through having to use Zoom, as Alvin was pointing out, there are some challenges, but maybe there, there's an opportunity there. Maybe as Trustee Campbell was saying, we have some disparities in the numbers of students signing up for a class. So maybe we could have students Zoom from one attendance area to another to take advantage of a class that would fill the enrollment. And then we have one teacher teaching that class. So I think we can look at different ways, thinking out of the box, working with our students to provide those supports that they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Mr. Prasad go.
So part of, so everybody has said that expanding the flexibility of where people can take courses is, is one option. The community colleges, ROP, all of those are options, Zoom classes are options. So we've had this discussion a number of times. But the reason that we are having this conversation is also that our, our current and previous boards have been very rigid, right? Everything needs to fit a particular cookie cutter form. And we think that. So typically you have, you have generalists and you have specialists. And some of the courses that we talk about need to be taught by specialist teachers. And you cannot have six of them for each high school. So you have to have, take the expertise to the students, not have the students go to the expertise that is located in one place. So by creating that flexible and a fluid setup, I think we can go a long way. So we're going to, for Lucy to go to, to Irvington for, for theater would be great, right? But then the AP computer science teacher going from Michigan to Irvington to Washington and American would be just awesome. Let's get that done. Thank you.
Perfect. For the next question Zion will be asking and Thank you. The next question is, if FUSD had a surplus of $10 million, how would you spend it? And the order will be Ms. Ting, Mr. Prasad, Trustee Burke, Ms. Kalapala, Ms. Shen, and lastly, Trustee Campbell. So to kick things off, Ms. Ting.
Is that me?
Yes.
Okay. $10 million. I would love that. So first of all, I would like to spend some, invest some in our campus facility because some are quite old and the infrastructure of internet and the safety of the building. And, and some would definitely to provide for more different programs to, to inch, to enrich students, student life such as a science and arts, literature, sports. And and, and then the other portion I would like to, to invest in our special education and and on duplicated students and unhoused students. And because they also need extra, extra care. And the third, the fourth is, you know, to provide, you know, support for the teachers and extra training and so that they can become a better leader educator for the, for the campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Prasad.
So $10 million is not a whole lot, right? $10 million is still a lot of money that, that can address some of the low lying issues. So if we were to prioritize, we should prioritize the infrastructure and, and training required that's needed to make the classrooms be smooth, right? And not where you're, if you're hitting technology issues. So let's, let's make the students feel, feel that everything is going without a hitch. So that should be number one. And whether it is for special needs students or for the unhoused, let's take care of the, the bottom line problem. And then the next place to, to expand would be to offer these vocational courses, the specialized courses that, that will create a welcoming, a well-rounded student setup for, for all of our students. And like I said, mental health is an integral factor of that. So hiring more counselors to, to be, in order to do that would be a piece of this. And when I talked about infrastructure, I did not mention textbooks. NGSS has so many things that we have done for the last many, many years without support. Let's bring the supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Trustee Burke.
Thank you. Are we playing back and forth with my mute button? It feels like it. So I guess the first question is, is it ongoing funds or is it one-time funds? Because that, that's the crux of it, right? If we just get $10 million that we can spend once, that's a different kind of conversation than $10 million that we have ongoing. And I will put a plug in for schools and communities first, that we could have money ongoing if COP15 passes. So that, that's my plug for that. One of the first things I would do is, is have the discussion about reducing class size. We try to keep the cuts as far away from our students as possible. And in recent years, when we've had to make budget cuts, one of the things we stayed away from it, but we have increased class sizes in some of our lower grades and in our secondary. So we need to restore class sizes. I would also support having techni- techno- technology infrastructure. So we talk about now it's COVID, we have one-on-one for every student. Well, that's been a dream in the past and this is forcing our hand to do it. Why don't we keep doing it once we're back in school that all of our students have a device, something that they can take home and to and from school, just as they would a textbook. And finally, I would say that purchases, Mr. Prasad had referred to our, we've had some adoptions that have been put on hold and we could purchase those adoptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Kalapala.
So my first priority goes to COVID. We have a technology issues. So the technology is the issue where we need a lot of infrastructure need to develop. And we have a less number of employees to help with 24 by seven support. So we need to provide the first to the technology because during the COVID is going on right now. So we are doing the online learning. The second thing is like, I want to address the mental health issues. We have a lack of counselors and we have very limited counselors in the campuses. So we need to bring the more counselors into the campus. And the, the students need, especially high school students are going through stress levels, looking at the screens and a lot of time spending on the screens. So they need the help and they want, they are looking for, so we need the counselor's help. And the third one, it is like bring more education resources to the classrooms and the classroom sizes. So we are, because of the overcrowding issue, we have a lot of our classroom sizes increasing every year. But so the second, third one, I go for the reduce the classroom size. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Shen.
I love this question. It lets me day, it lets all of us daydream. Although 10 million, even as only a one-time fund, it, it's a dream and it's also a cruel limit. It's a lot, but it's not quite enough, right? But in order of priority, I think right now, on top of distance learning, we're also thinking very seriously about how we can safely get back on campus. And we know that our ventilation systems on most campuses are not up to standard. So getting our ventilation up to code so that we can actually get back in class because so many of our classrooms don't even have windows. And then if we can, moving towards carbon neutral or negative campuses by focusing on renewable energy resources. My next priority is textbooks. Textbooks are, so many of our textbooks are shockingly outdated. Our state standards for history, for example, are wonderful, but the textbooks we're using are 14 years out of date. And so all of the, a lot of the things we're asking for now could be true if we had up-to-date textbooks. And a lot of that does fall back on a budget-related issue. And so if we had this big of an excess, it would be a really major investment to make. Thirdly, I've been talking to some, some previous teachers and we spoke about the triple As, which is academics, arts and athletics. And arts and athletics should not be seen as peripheral, they should not be seen as extra. And I would love to invest back into bringing back our arts programs and our athletics programs so that our students can be more well-rounded and have a good school experience.
Thank you. Trustee Campbell.
Thank you. I echo Trustee Burke's comments about, we have a saying that we always say as school board members, don't use one-time money for ongoing expenses. So it would just So it would just depend on whether this would be a part of money that we could expect to have ongoing, which would be great. I'd love to have 10 million more dollars every year to fund some of the programs in our schools. But given COVID-19, I think my focus would be on counselors. We talked a lot about mental health and why that was important. Custodians, I think that it's important that we make sure that the, the safety as we begin to talk about reopening schools. We would definitely need to have some custodians, some additional custodians to do some of the things that we would have to do depending on whether we got small cohorts or how, how that is going to actually play out. And then another thing that I think that is very important for us to start to consider, and if I had $10 million, I would, is a school-based health center. We have these wellness centers, but we really don't have a school-based health centers where kids could just walk across campus and get some of the services that they need. These school-based health centers are also open to families as well and community. So that's what I would do with my 10 million. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll pass it off to Alvin.
Perfect. For this next round of questions, I will be asking the questions and Zion will be moderating and raising the time placards. This next question is, what steps would you take to combat racism and discrimination in Fremont Unified School District? Include diverse curriculum, comma, staff, comma, et cetera. So sorry, let me rephrase that question again. What steps would you take to combat racism and discrimination in F U S D? The speaking order for this question will be Ms. Burke, Ms. Shen, Mrs. Campbell, Mr. Prasad, Mrs. Zhang, and Mrs. Calapala. Trustee Burke, let's start with you.
Thank you. Obviously, this is a very important, important question. And it's sad to think that we're, we're in a situation now where we're not able to be physically together as we address these issues. But having said that, we need to address our curriculum first and foremost. And that work has begun, whether it's through our core novels or through our supplemental materials. But we need to make sure that what, what students are reading reflects their own experiences or the experiences of their, their family members. And that needs to be embedded across the curriculum. I mentioned that earlier. In addition, we need to start having students, seeing themselves in their teachers. And I've, I've mentioned this before, where I think an ideal opportunity is to train or work with our young people so they can say, ah, education is the field for me. I want to be a teacher. And so they're going to come back to Fremont and help diversify our teaching force. I see my time is up. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Burke. Next up, let's have Ms. Shen.
The first step is to recognize that we do have a problem with racism in our schools, right? The statistic that really bothered me that I came across recently was Hispanic students in 2018 and 2019 were four times as likely as Asian students to get suspended and then seven times as likely to get suspended for defiance specifically. So I just, I don't want anyone to deny that we have a problem. The hiring aspect is really important. We have to recruit from, we have to, where we recruit from matters. And we have to really have a teaching staff and a faculty staff in general that reflects our very diverse community. It's also important that students see themselves in their curriculum. I learned about lots of figures in, in recent times that were not in my curriculum. For example, Mabel Ping Hua Lee, highly recommend anyone look her up. First Chinese woman in the US earned a PhD in econ and then led our women's suffrage movement. These are stories that I would have loved to see in my history curriculum and would have been able to see myself and now yourselves making history as well. So learning about the histories of our communities and empowering our students to achieve excellence in any of their fields of interest.
Thank you, Ms. Shen. Next up, let's have trustee Campbell go.
Yes, you know, this is a very important question and we know that institutional racism has, has been around forever. And until we can change the hearts and minds of people, it will always be there. Dr. Martin Luther King said injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. So we have to speak out against injustice. We have to be able to have those courageous conversations about what it looks like and why it's important for us to, to talk about it and try to mitigate the impact that it has on our students. We have equity policies that we have established as, as board members to, to begin to address that. We have an equity committee. We're thinking about combining these committees. We're, we're revisioning what the equity and what is going to look like in our, in our, in our school district by pulling together people from very diverse backgrounds to have those conversations of how, how we can better. I know we talked about hiring teachers, but I think that we need to have those deeper conversations to get to where people really think about other people. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Campbell. Next up, Mr. Prasad, you may go ahead.
Racism exists, right? Whether it is intentional or intentional, there are, there are many, many forms that it takes and must be addressed. And we have to, we have to start from the, the basics. The curriculum that we teach is so Eurocentric today. So people, the students don't identify with their own cultures or with the diversity of this global economy that we live in. So, so the, the more, the more you educate about the diversity, the better it gets, right? So and even whatever we, we actually learn, like the civil war, the way it is framed in our, in our curriculum is, is very, very different than how, what the movement was actually trying to achieve, right? So the, the way people actually author these things. So, so racism requires sensitivity training. It requires compassion for everybody. It requires students to actually identify themselves for what they are or who they are. And together we'll, we'll make it reduced and go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prasad. Next up, Mrs. Deng, you may go ahead.
Can you repeat the question?
Yep. The question is, what steps would you take to combat racism and discrimination in F U S D?
I think it takes an enlightened society to address this. It takes the whole society, even from when, it takes the community, the parents, the teachers and how we talk to our students, to our kids. And when kids, you know, when they're small, they have no idea, you know, you're different from me, you have a different color than me. We are just a human, we're just friends. So I think we need to start a culture which is embracing, tolerating, compassionate and embrace the differences and open-minded and communicative. So this is an ongoing process and it happens everywhere. But I think the awareness proceeds with action. So we are now that we have this movement and I hope that, you know, this time we're going to propel us to, to reach a next level. And we would continue to have a dialogue in the community, in a, in a, in a family. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zhang. Next up, we'll have Mrs. Calapala.
The racism, it is there for the generations. It has been there. So in our schools, to bring the change about the racism, as we said, as Michelle said, that we need to work our curriculum committee. So where we call it as a diversified community. So we need to bring the curriculum where to address all the diversified, the curriculum where like to learn about the world history, world personalities, so that they understand the cultures of the different. And in the schools, it is like from, you have to introduce from the, right from the early classes itself. It should be, there, there should not be any race, gender barriers to learning. All the teachers has to encourage the students for every potential. It is like they have to and identify the different culture, religious festivals and introduce, remember and tell, greet them in the classrooms. So bringing the curriculum change is the most important. That way we can bring the intrinsic change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Calapala. Next round, Zion will be asking the questions and I will be timing. Zion, take it away.
The next question is, what does educational equity mean to you? What steps would you take to ensure educational, educational equity, representation and support for underrepresented, underrepresented or minority populations such as blacks, Hispanics, LGBTQ plus, et cetera, and closing the achievement gap? I'll put this question in the chat since it's very long. The order will be trustee Campbell, Ms. Deng, Ms. Calapala, Ms. Shen, Mr. Prasad and trustee Burke. So trustee Campbell, take it away.
So educational equity means to me that every, well, equity certainly does not mean equal. So that means that every student get what they need as opposed to being equal to other students. As we've already mentioned in this forum, we, we know we need diversity in our curriculum. We know that we need diversity in our hiring practices. We know we live in a very diverse environment, so we need to ensure that we have staff and leaders that look like our community, that represent our community. And so that's why I think that it's so important for us to, to be able to do that. And I think, you know, when we have the, the equity conversation, we also need to, in that conversation, we need to talk about budgets. How do we use the money that we have to be, to so that it is equitable across the district? Meaning how much of those funds need to go to special education, English learners, learners, our homeless families? And how do we spread the dollars in a way that is equitable to be able to give each and every child what they need to get to be successful? Because not every child needs all of the money. They may need less depending on their needs. So, thank you.
Sorry, I was muted. Next up, we have Miss Ying.
I agree with Mrs. Campbell that equity means that each student didn't get what they, they, they need to be successful and to realize their full potential. And I believe that equity and excellence does not mutually exclusive. Actually, I believe that excellence elevate equity and equity, you know, further compelled excellence in education. So I think that when we are open-minded, we pay attention, we, then we can see the solution where to, to allocate the fund so that the students who are hungry and get more challenged and then students who need help and get extra support and, and, and care. I, I do, I do think the solution is carefully study the situation and analyze and then come with a comprehensive solution. And it's doable. And when we have our Fremont community on board, I think we can achieve a great school district and everyone succeed in their own way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mrs. Calapala.
So learning styles vary from student to student and differ between males and females and vary from with the disabilities. And to create equity in the classroom for everyone, here are some methods we need to do is like first to bring the variance. It is like a present the same information in different ways like visual, oral and verbal learns for the disability student. Use a variety of media like audiobooks, movies and different ways of learning the transcripts for the multimedia materials and make technology accessible to the people who are not able to see properly. So they give the student, for example, like they give the student the ability to increase the text size or adjust the brightness, like presentation. And especially help the Delexia friendly fonts and read. So, and also there are different special ed needs, English learners. And so for them also, it is like equally the funds has to be distributed properly for all types of the students who are facing the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Shen.
I want to echo it again. Trustee Campbell said equity doesn't mean equal at a recent board meeting. And then again, just now, and that's forever something I will applaud. The, the first thing I want to recognize is that Fremont is a segregated city, geographically speaking. And I think it's important for us to, in terms of closing equity gaps, it's important to be moving towards a future where that isn't true. And that is going to require a really long timeline. It's going to require collaboration across lots of city orgs. But it's a valuable goal to work towards. We have a liaison committee with the city council, so let's lean on them. Let's ask our city planning commission to make it a top priority. Because I'm not seeing enough discussion about how we can better desegregate our city from a socioeconomic perspective at a geographical level. I also think it's important to reevaluate all of our disciplinary systems so that we are not taking extraordinarily punitive measures on students in a destructive way, right? We should try to build up our students and be constructive in their healing processes instead of, instead of tearing them down and shutting them out of our, our systems. This involves training our educators and our staff to take a trauma-informed approach, remembering that every student has contexts that may not be obvious in the classroom. These are all important things to consider.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Prasad.
Equity is one of those sort of misrepresented, misused, overused words here. And I mean, to me, equity means, equity means the ability for us to, to provide the, the support needed for every student to achieve whatever they are trying, aspiring to achieve. And in order to do that, it, it, it needs to be a broader curriculum so that you are, you're impacting all of the interests. Maybe it's, in some sense, what we do is we say, okay, let's add some AP courses here, but we take away the woodworking courses at Hopkins. So creating a, a well-rounded student requires good planning. And some of the committees that we have created, the curriculum committee and others that we are seeing, they are so skewed the way they are structured that the outcome is almost predetermined. And we see that with the, the other committees today too. So particularly for D five community, we kind of forget that there are also special needs that each individual student has and we must be, you must be supporting them. So vocational programs, excellence programs and the ability to succeed after school should be our focus. Thanks.
Thank you. Lastly, for this question, we have trustee Burke.
Thank you. So if you'll forgive my crude drawing, I don't know if you can even see it. What resonates with me is this graphic where equal means everybody has the same, the same level playing field, right? And then equity is where you have, oh, I'm going to give more to some and more to the other and everybody's going to be equal. But what would really be equitable or would be taking down the barriers altogether. And so I think that's something that we need to strive for in F U S D. And how we can do that is training, ongoing training, not just for teachers, but training for students themselves. Because one of the things that I heard in the microaggressions panel is that students themselves are also engaging in behaviors that are, might be considered academic bullying or social bullying. And so we need to train students. What does that mean? We also need to revisit our restorative practices and make sure that everybody is on board with understanding how that is implemented in our school system. Budgets, when you, budgets reflect your priorities. So if our priorities are to make things equitable, then that's the, that's the conversation that we need to have. And finally, as we've all mentioned, students need to see themselves in the curriculum. They need to see themselves in their teachers and we need to invest in that, in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass it off to Alvin.
For this next question, I'll be asking the question and Zion will be timing. This next question is from a student from Washington. The question is, how do you plan to support arts, music, sports and other programs? The speaking order for this question will be Mrs. Calapala, trustee Burke, Mr. Prasad, Mrs. Zhang, trustee Campbell and Ms. Shen. Once again, the question is, how do you plan to support arts, music, sports and other programs? Mrs. Calapala, go ahead and take it away.
So when we talk about the children's overall growth, that is like, it is not only the education. We need to have all the, the extracurricular activities, art programs is most important in our student's curriculum. So as I've said, that it is like, some of the schools has taken the theater classes and Irvington has it. So we need to, the lot of students there, I recently, the forum conducted for the students, they say that we need those things back. So our schools are right now, because of the lack of the funds and we are not able to provide some of, they're cutting the classes for the art programs. But we need to bring it back to that, so that it will bring the students overall growth. Like it is like we are cutting up the sports, we are cutting up the music. Music is like music from, we as a P T A's are supporting for to kind of increase the music programs in the schools. And there are a lot of shortages for the instructions also. So we need to bring them back and we use our budget resources properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Calapala. Next up, trustee Burke.
Thank you. Well, we've talked about how our, how budgets reflect our priorities. And as a school system, we prioritize academics while pushing the arts, the sports and everything to extracurriculars, but also relying heavily on volunteers and community organizations. So we need to revisit that. So if we're talking about that $10 million we're going to get, then we can reinvest. One of the things that I don't think is a coincidence is when we spoke earlier about having more counselors in our. is when we spoke earlier about having more counselors in our elementary age, it's because we've taken away all of those problems, problems. You've taken away all of those resources and programs from our elementary school. So if we reinstate art and music and sports and other programs that help students, whether it's chess or Boy Scouts or girls, if we reinstate those, I think we'll have, we'll be addressing social emotional issues with our very younger students. And that can, and that can push back up to the high school level. So it's a reinvestment of our priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Burke. Next, next up, Mr. Prasad.
So art, music, and sports are, I mean, we talked about mental health, and art, music, and sports actually help the mental health situation in a large way. So we must be willing to fund these programs. And in some sense, today, the, the push has been to actually take away some of these programs from one school or the other because in the name of equity, right? So, so let's not, let's not do that to start with. And wherever the, the programs are running, we should run those. There's actually funds available from businesses and industry for, for, as part of the CSR dollars for such programs. So we need to try to attract those to us. And, and eventually, eventually, we have to also be able to take the, our teachers, like Mr. Conway, if he can go from, from the Mission area to Washington area and actually go teach one day, this will be great. So let's, let's leverage our resources and, and drive to, to support these programs. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Prasad. Next up, Mrs. Dong.
Absolutely. I support art, art, sports programs. And, and that would be helping to, to reduce the mental issues and so that we can save the money and go back to investing in art and, and music programs. But how to start, to begin with, I think we need the community's support. I do believe that as long as our community understands that those money, whatever the way we raise the money, will be contributed to the program. I do believe parents would be eager and enthusiastic to donate the money to fund the program. I think that way, we do need a transparency about how the money is being spent and how it is spent and, and the careful bookkeeping. And I do think this program could, could survive and, and be long-lasting. Of course, we can go out to the other side resource to raise money, you know, to some local charity and organization, and if we have a well, we always find a way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dong. Next up, Trustee Campbell.
This is a wonderful question too, because I believe that arts, music, P E, and other programs, I'm not sure what the other programs would mean, but I do think that they are very, very important for the mental and social emotional health of our students. And so what we have been doing as a school district is we've been working really closely with our, our foundation, Fremont Education Foundation. I was the president of the foundation for three years. I'm an associate member. We have been providing the after-school band program. When it was taken away, we were able to take that on as a, as one of our programs to ensure that we kept music in the elementary schools, because the music in elementary schools had went away. We had a wonderful concert every year with FUS, the Fremont Unified Student Support Service. They do a talent show, so we partnered with them and can, and have worked with them to, to host a talent show every year, because we understand that this is important for us. But we are an academically focused school district. Thank you.
I think, next up, we have Miss Shen.
Our super stellar band programs even are getting, are entirely dependent on F E F, on the Fremont Education Foundation right now, which is just a clear indication that we're not prioritizing them, right? Because when it's entirely dependent on donations, that's not exactly a dependable source of income, and so we can't guarantee its longevity. And if even a program as stellar and well-loved as our, as our junior high and elementary school band programs is, is put on the back burner like this, I think it's an indication that we are not actually actively prioritizing our arts or our athletics programs. I, I do believe that one way we can change this is by allowing more flexibility, like I've mentioned earlier in our curriculum choices, because this could free up a lot of funding to reinvest into our arts programs by allowing off-campus credits, weekend classes, zero, zeroth and seventh periods, because also it will draw up more interest, right? And free up more funding. I also genuinely believe in interdisciplinary education. It's a huge value for me, because your learning in other subject areas makes you a better critical thinker and a better student in all other areas. So it's definitely an area of high importance for me.
Thank you. Next question, Zion will be asking the question, and I will be facilitating and holding up the time cards.
The next question is, what steps would you take in order to ensure students maintain their physical and mental health, both in distance learning and in in-person instruction? And the order for this will be Mr. Prasad, Trustee Campbell, Miss Shen, Trustee Burke, Ms. Calipala, and Miss Ting. So, Mr. Prasad, take it away.
So, distance learning has obviously created more stress in the system. So for, for a healthy student population, from both the mental and physical health perspective, we just talked about adding back art, music, and sports programs and, and the budget needed for that. But in addition to that, for, for mental health, we need to include awareness of mental health from elementary school so that kids are able to identify when there's a problem. And for, for physical health as well, I see, I see that we, at work at least, we do have these virtual coffees, where we do all kinds of things. There has to be motivation for, for the students to actually get some physical exercise while they are working from home or studying from home. So, mental health, there are many things that we have proposed today. Physical health wise, peer, peer, pairing up people in pairs so that they can motivate each other to, to get some physical exercise would go a long way in supporting their physical health. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have Trustee Campbell.
Can you repeat the question for me really quickly?
Yes, the question is, what states, what steps would you take ensure, sorry, what steps would you take in order to ensure students maintain their mental and physical health, both in distance learning and in in-person instruction?
Okay, okay. Well, certainly it would be a lot easier for in-person, because you could actually see the faces of the kids. You can actually see, see them and better in a, in a on-ground reality. But that's, that what we don't have now. I think one of the things that would really help kids is to make sure that they have, in a distance learning environment, that they have the technology that they need so that they can connect. Sometimes, if, if students don't have a way to connect, they, they, they can't connect with their peers or their teachers or a trusted adult. So I think we have done a great job of making sure students have one-to-one devices, hotspots, and the stuff that they need to be successful. And sure they have a safe place to learn. We talked about, you know, prioritizing students to, to maybe have some of them come back on campus if we were going to do some of these like pop-up pods that they're having nowadays. And then I think our school district is very concerned about students' mental health. And when they don't see them or hear from them, they do home visits. And so I think that we need to bring back the whole idea of having our counselors and school staff go to homes and check on kids. And so, my time is up.
Thank you. Next up, we have Miss Shen.
I'm thinking a lot about how I've been keeping up my physical and mental health at home in this time of smoke-filled air and working from home, basically, for me. I am incredibly privileged, right? I have a switch. I have a Ring Fit adventure. I have a quiet and clean space and a yoga mat that I can do yoga in. I have access to yoga classes, so I know what I'm doing, and I don't break my hips. My own privilege for me is, it's a reminder in recognizing that not everyone has access to the same resources and spaces to maintain their physical and mental health, and may not have had the systems and programs with which to build up those habits. And so my, the solutioning I would like to do is entirely in that direction. Obviously, providing resources and facilities wherever possible, creatively thinking about what we have available that we can offer in a safe way. And I am really glad that our physical education teachers are continuing to teach remotely. So the important part beyond that is finding ways to teach and motivate students to build up these habits, right? This includes things like accountability, accountability partnerships that could be with, between students or with faculty checkups. And perhaps this is a very Silicon Valley answer of me, but I believe that gamifying these systems could be one way to motivate our students to continuously build on these habits.
Thank you. Next up, we have Trustee Burke.
Thank you. This is actually a very emotional question, question for me, because I have a student, as I mentioned, who is in high school and is very, very engaged in sports. And, and so when we went into shelter in place, his activity stopped. And even though he knew in his head that it would be good to have that self-motivation and to go and do things, he wasn't interested in doing it with me. He wanted to do it with his friends, but that simply wasn't possible. So there was a, there was a lot of concern and emotion that went, that happened for our family through the spring. And I think part of that is that we need to train our teachers and our fellow students to understand what are some of the symptoms of somebody who might be depressed or somebody who is just having anxiety or a bad day. And so that they could then help that student reach out or reach out on their behalf, if that's appropriate. I would love to explore the idea of exercise pods. We've talked about learning pods, and I think that's a good idea, but we need to talk about exercise pods where we can bring people safely onto our campuses where they can work out together as well as learn together. And, and I think that's something we can do both in our physical presence as well as distance learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have...
So, in this COVID time, so the students are learning in front of the screen. So recently, one of the parent emailed to me about the mental health stress about their kids of the homework, they are spending, the high school kids more than 13 hours in front of the screen. That causes them for the headaches and kind of, so this is the issues right now we are having, because it's like, as Desri said, that it's in front of the students. We know that what students are facing. It is like we can identify by the face. So this time, the counselors and the teachers, the parents also take equal part where student is lacking of, and the students, parents has to talk to the counselors. So where the help is needed. And the, another issue is like taking the physical breaks. So that definitely it will help for the students. It's not like a continuously screen time, take the breaks and two hours going around the neighborhood, walking, and definitely the physical help give the more turnaround time while studying back at the same. So they had, it has to be balanced together. So in that, it is like everybody take part. It is like in the school teachers and the same time, the counselors. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, for this question, we have Miss Ting.
Um, I think for older students, there is no excuse. I would like my kids to help me with my lunch and dinner, so they have to give them a break to, out of the, to get out of the, the screen time and also to walk the dog and help the parents. And for parents, you need to watch out for your kids and make sure they go out, just to go out, walk, you know, every, maybe every day, 30 minutes. And even parents themselves, we're so, spend so much time in front of the screen. And, you know, you, for me, that I'm an outdoor person. If I stay at home for too long without walking around, I really just feel sick. So I think it's a habit, and it's awareness of the community, and with exercise, and, and we will reduce the mental issues. So it's, it's important. Another thing is, um, that I, I was just, you know, several years ago, I watched the, the movie Wu Yi. And the, the, the future generation, when they stayed in the computer and they could not even stand up, they would order the cold kind of food. And I just could not imagine that would be, you know, something happening, you know, could happen in our future. So we need to really take this thing seriously. And physical exercise currently and in the future, it's a very important thing, especially we are going to.
Thank you. Alvin will be asking our next question.
Okay, thank you. For this question, I'll be asking the question, and Zion will be facilitating. This next question is from a student, and the question is, do you believe Kennedy is falling behind in the academic opportunities they offer compared to schools like Mission or Irvington? Furthermore, is Kennedy lacking in resources overall? The speaking order for this question is Miss Shen, Mrs. Calipala, Mrs. Dong, Trustee Campbell, Trustee Burke, and Mr. Prasad. Mrs. Shen, go ahead and take it away.
When it comes to academics, I think it would be incorrect, right? For us to assume that is, or to say that it, that the schools are equal or have equity even between the offerings, because it's, it's plain to see that MSJ has, MSJ Irvington especially, these are the two schools where they're honestly well-known for prioritizing academics above all else. We've obviously been having conversations about whether that is a balanced or healthy way to tackle it. But I do agree that if we're going to talk comparatively only about academics, that while I wouldn't use the phrase falling behind necessarily, I do think that Kennedy has less of a focus on academic programs. The process of making it better for, for Kennedy students who would like to lean into their academics more involves a lot of transparency and access work, right? It means making ourselves available as school board members to students with concerns about the academic opportunities they have, finding ways to open avenues so that students can access resources across different campuses and really empowering students to reach into whichever side they would prefer to invest more in.
Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Calipala.
So it is, the Kennedy School is like, it is a mix of the diversity, and there is a lot of the resources is needed in that school. It is like, and there is students who are fault of the curriculum and who are not able to cope up with the school classroom curriculum. So for them, it is like extra after-school math programs and English learner extra programs and tutoring facilities should be available and more resources for the students. And, and the classroom sizes, which is helps also, it is like to focus more on the students. And we need to bring to equity in the schools. It is like bring a lot of education resources. That is one thing. And another thing is like, if to bring the change, it is like we need to bring the parents and the teachers and everybody collaboratively work together to bring this school go, go into the good academic state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Calipala. Next up, Mrs. Dong.
Um, if we only judge by the, the data academically, maybe we would say so. But I think they have a very excellent art sports program, and the kids are thriving in that. And several, a week ago, several weeks ago, there is a president of the, of the newspaper Titan, and he interviewed me. I'm very impressed by this junior student and his maturity and his critical thinking. It's very impressive. So for me to say they are like behind, I need more data. And I would love the opportunity to talk to more students to see what I'm needed and what they aspire to be, and then so that we can give them the support they truly need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dong. Next up, Trustee Campbell.
I want to honestly say that I think that all of our students and all of our schools can get a quality education from Fremont Unified. Kennedy is on a block schedule, which allows them to have more time to go deeper into the curriculum and the subject matter, which I think is great. So there is more dollars that go into block scheduling than, than, than other schools, other, other high schools. Kennedy's families have spoken out. I was in a forum with them where they made some demands about what they wanted in terms of their facilities, what they wanted in terms of their language arts programs. So they have been speaking out, asking for more supports for their families. I think that we should think more in terms of enrichment programs rather than intervention programs. I think that they have opportunities to do some wonderful things as they enrich the lives of the students there instead of looking at them and saying that they need intervention or they need extra, extra help and supports. So thank you. My time is up. Or they need extra, extra help and supports. So thank you. My time is up.
Thank you, trustee Campbell. Next up, trustee Burke.
You by asking this question, it makes me realize that maybe not everybody. Knows that Kennedy was recognized as a blue ribbon school a couple of years ago. And so it is actually a hidden gem in our district if people aren't aware that. They're doing amazing things for the for the students in the school. Trustee Campbell said there's a block schedule that allows students to go more in depth. It also allows them to take more classes than. Other students in the other high schools. They have ASL classes that are smooth this year, and that's something that's unique to Kennedy. We have also, there's more money because there are some students there that are unduplicated. So there's more money that can go to programs. For resources and support. And a couple of years ago, as some of you know, the board members. Are assigned to an attendance area. And so when I was assigned to Kennedy, I had dinner with Kennedy students. And every single one of them said how thrilled they were to be at Kennedy and they wouldn't trade it for any other school in the district. Because they felt that they had an enriched experience and they also had class smaller class sizes to. Reach out and work with their teachers more authentically. So I'm very proud of Kennedy and I think all everybody in this school district should be too. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Burke. Next up, Mr. Prasad.
Well, from from the answers and from my limited exposure to to Kennedy in the past. I mean, that's one school where the kids actually are bonded with the school. And that's one thing that's. A testament to the fact that whatever is being done is actually, I mean, they they are enjoying the studies there. Now, we are definitely not. Doing them any favors by limiting the number of AP courses available there, having no vocational. Courses that that some of the students would be looking for. So enriching their curriculum can be done through distance learning that we have talked about already. And also having having even if there are only ten students that want to have a particular course. By sharing teachers across campuses, we can improve their improve their ability to. To have more opportunities. And also the block schedule allows them to actually go out and do internships with local businesses. That will make that will enrich their lives or their education experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much, all the candidates. For the next question, Zion will be asking and I will be timing.
Thank you. This next question is, how do you plan on working with our unions? CSEA, SEIU, FATA and FMSA. In a way that will that will most support our students. And this question is a live question as was the previous question. The order will be Miss Ding, Mr. Prasad. Trustee Burke, Miss Calapala, Miss Shen and trustee Campbell. So first up is Miss Ding.
It takes all parties' contribution and understanding to make a successful school district. And if I'm being elected as a board member. I would spend time and be a good listener and I talk to each parties to understand their challenges. And their point of view. And then we can come to consensus and. And then to to agree on a. Implementable solution. And I know that, you know, we are talking about a budget. And there's a limited budget and ninety percent is given to. The teachers and the uni is representing the teachers. But I think, you know, we are in this together and the common goal is the students. And I do believe that we are, we want to join force and work together. It just takes communication and and that's understanding. And I'm willing to learn and listen and I come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Prasad.
So finding common ground is is the the primary way of getting consensus on tough issues. And like Miss Zhang said, we. Every every party in this in this partnership. Has the best interests of their constituents in mind and also the best interest of the student. This is all about student. We have to be driving in that direction. So so I come to the table as a as my business. Cap on. With the with the notion that all the parties are there with the series with the intent to do the best for our students. And then see where are the disconnects and where where the divergences are happening and find the common ground to to get to the right place. Now, as a trustee, Board of Trustees, we have to set the right ground rules. We seem like today we given very easily and and that's why that's why there's a breakdown. In not only communication, but but the the common goal seems to be going in the wrong direction. So we need a change so that the the common goal becomes our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have trustee Burke.
Thank you. So I agree that the the common ground is that we're all invested in our students that we want the best for our students. And so when you. When you segregate people by saying this union or that union, what we're really talking about are all the stakeholders. And whether you're a teacher or a custodian, a parent, a student, a board member or a district staff member, you are a stakeholder invested in Fremont Unified. Because you want our students to do the very best that each student can do. So so what I think is very important is building relationships and coming to understand. Why somebody is saying or thinking or expressing something the way they are. And I'm very proud of the fact that I have built relationships on a one to one level, but also on a larger level through the twenty five through the. LMI, the Labor Management Initiative, which is a collaborative of all labor groups, representatives and board members and staff. Where we come together and we address issues such as the budget. And we've been encouraging our administration to do budget deep dives. With our labor groups so that they can also be part of the solution. And come up, we we have a lot of creativity and and brains in this district and putting it all together to come up with solutions is the next best step. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Miss Calapala.
So this is the time where we need to work together. So it's a it's a Fremont unions, whatever it is like we are, as Michelle Brooks said, they are all part of the stakeholders in the Fremont Unified School District. So we need to have a proper ground to discuss all the issues. It is like. Look externally and internally for the improvement of the students. It is students is not the line item. They are the primary source. What we are doing all these things for. So whatever the things is like students is the highest priority. So we need to. Bring the recommendations to the unions, saying that it is like this is the situation and we need to work and common ground. And resolve the issues for the benefit of the students. And and it is not only the one person's job. It is like as a board members, everyone collaboratively work together. And bring the issues into the board into and discuss discuss them and establish the shared values. And bring the for the bringing the good outcome for the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have mission.
Working with all of our associations and unions really to do successfully, we have to have open conversation and a collaborative attitude. And transparency wherever possible. We also have to assume best intentions and remember that we are all here to support our students. I'm just saying this because there's been a lot of tension, I would say, between certain community members about the union negotiation processes. This means that the school board should be clarifying information about the negotiation process. And surfacing it so that it's easier for the community and for union and association members to find. And it also means that we should actively reject misinformation on these decisions. More specifically, while we're trying to figure out how we get back to school, I want to work closely with SEIU members in hiring more custodial staff and supplying PPE and cleaning materials. And also with SEIU for our distance learning while we're feeding our students who have free reduced price lunches. The committee that I'd like to form to oversee the process of our diverse educational state framework of implementing it. That would require working with FATA, just like I did on the Sex Ed Task Force and working also with paraeducators in CSEA. And with FM FM SA to ensure that our curriculum is equitable and representative and appropriate for our students.
Thank you. And lastly, for this question, we have trustee Campbell.
You know, I think the most important thing is to build good relation trusting trusting relationships with our. Our stakeholder union groups. And I think that over the years I have been able to do that. I have met successfully with all of the. Presidents of the of the unions. We specifically FATA, we would have a monthly meeting where we would meet and talk about. Shared concerns from both the schoolwork perspective and from the union's perspective. And I think one of the things that we also have to realize is that. Our staff is going through the same concerns that our. Parents are going through. Our teachers have small children. Our teachers have aging parents. Our paraeducators have health issues. So to be sensitive to all that they're going through too. Is a way to build trust and establish strong relationships so that you can have the have that dialogue. Unfortunately, during the bargaining process, there's a lot of information that's confidential that cannot be shared with the public by law. So it's not like we're deliberately withholding information from the public. But we're legally required to to handle negotiations in a certain way. So with that, my time is up. God, I keep losing my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll be asking this next question. Oh, sorry, Alvin will be asking this next question.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I'll be asking this next question and Zion will be timing. This is my personal favorite question because I think student voice and student leadership in our district is very important. This question was from a student at American High School. The question is, how will you proactively work with students? And solicit their opinions in order to take student voice into account while making district questions? How would you ensure that all students have equal representation and opportunities to voice their opinions in key district decisions? The speaking order for this question will be trustee Burke, Mrs. Sun, trustee Campbell, Mr. Prasad, Mrs. Zhang and Mrs. Calapala. Trustee Burke, take it away.
Thank you. Again, one of the things I I mentioned in my opening comments is that I've been very proud of the relationships that I've built with our students. Our student board members as well as just students in the community. Because I still have a student in our schools. I'm frequently at school sites and have opportunities to engage and talk with students. So making sure that their their voices are heard. We have a representative student body, which is Surfboard E, and we now have Gen Up, which has become more active in the last few years. And I have met willingly, whether it's. You know, behind the scenes, having a chat in the middle of a board meeting, well, not in the middle of a board meeting, but during the grades, to better understand what the needs are of our students. We've insisted that we have student representation on most of our committees. And I think that's something that we push for to make sure that student voice is represented, whether it's SRO, curriculum instruction, the budget task force, Zion has participated in. So we've been strong advocates and I would say that when our students go to CSBA conferences. They find that Fremont is one of the most active, studently engaged districts around the state. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Burke. Next up, we'll have Mrs. Sun.
I thankfully actually still have a lot of personal connections with with specifically the MSJ side, right? And I've been leaning into those a lot. And building those connections through our campaign and actually talking with current students as part of this campaign work that we've been doing. Has been my favorite part so far because there's nothing like hearing directly from a student's mouth, how absolutely frustrating the back to school experience has been for them and why specifically that's the case. So solutioning on that side has been a very interesting and informative process for me, especially because I am a few years out of school. For me, I think my blind spot is actually reaching out to students across other campuses. So I want to definitely lean into that more and and try to forge connections. Across our different campuses because I recognize, especially as a representative of specifically Area Five, that our volunteers and. Current students involved in the campaign are all MSJ and Irvington students. So I do owe responsibility to actively reach out. And that includes talking either through ASB or club leadership is is usually my direct avenue towards reaching out to more current students.
Thank you, Mrs. Sun. Next up, trustee Campbell.
I definitely believe that student voice is very, very important. I have often said and said publicly. They are the ones that are in the classroom every day, six hours, eight hours a day. I'm not in the classroom. So in order for me to understand and hear and and what's going on, to force solutions and try to work work on problems. I need to hear from students what's actually going on. And they email me. I have gotten emails from students. Sharing the information about their opinions or what's not working. We the school board just recently passed the Students' Bill of Rights. I worked with Alvin and Zion on that. And we came up with some some great language about the rights of students and their abilities to be able to speak out. In my personal work at Bay Area Community Health, I have had students on committees that I have worked on grant work with. To lend voice around some things that are going on in the school district. So we are, I am definitely engaged with students and want to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Campbell. Next up, Mr. Prasad.
Sorry, took me a minute here. Okay. So as we as we look at students, they they have to be our primary focus, right? I I call them my customers. Some some students may not like themselves to be called customers, but they are, they are my customers, my focus, my my. My main success depends on their success. So and I have two FUSD student advisors at home or former students. And as I look at the the current boards decisions or. That have happened in the in the recent past, like trying to eliminate the zero period that the students are asking for. Or introducing curriculum without textbooks. That puts students in 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 sort of. A spot where they cannot. Or they are carrying those big textbooks home back and forth with those heavy backpacks. So all of those are are bad for us. So I would create a team. I have that experience working with the team with my PFA four years at Mission. So let's get back here. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Prasad. Next up, Mrs. Zhang.
Students are the the people we serve. Of course, we would love more opportunities to talk to them. And I think the dialogue has to be going two ways. They would be able easily reach out to us and will be easily reach out to them. And. And I would also like to encourage students to join a different community like the forum. So that we can discuss some important matters. And to be honest, I'm very impressed by our students. They are mature, you know, their maturity, they are the smartness, they are a community, good community citizens. So I would love to talk to them more often and. And so hopefully I would get such opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zhang. For the last individual for this question, Mrs. Calapala.
So all we are doing this is for the because of the students. Students are our primary focus. So without listening to the student voice, there is nothing. It's so because it's like they are the primary stakeholders of this. Community. So we are our schools, whatever the resources we are bringing, whatever the education quality, that is the perfect to bring the. Our students growth. So if we see that, we had already seen that our FUSD students are very good in the leadership skills. And so listening to the voice of the students, it first talks about the democracy of the student. So we giving the student the experience of practicing the political decision making in a democracy. So and their voices listen and they are opinions has to be valued. The second thing, it helps the student leadership qualities. So the the way the learn how to be a leader is very active leadership role. The third one, it is like student achievement automatically increase in the district. Because we are encouraging and it gives the confidence to the students. It's a overall growth of the student and the district's performance will increase. Thank you.
Thank you. For this next and last question for the evening, Zion will be asking it and I will be timing.
This next question is that FUSD has recent. This next question is that FUSD has recently seen facility renovation projects go over budget. How do you plan to keep facilities projects on budget while continuing to upgrade the rest of FUSD's facilities? The order for this will be Ms. Kalapala, trustee Burke, Mr. Prasad, Ms. Zhang, trustee Campbell, and lastly, Mission. Ms. Kalapala.
So we have an ongoing budget for the majory for the facility development projects. So we are using for that for the middle school development projects. So and some of the the funds which are which are using from the general budget where a general funds for the local developments. But when we are talking about this thing, it is like for the middle school developments. So it is like it has to be the expenditure and the the infrastructure and how they are spending. It has to be more transparent to the community and how the money it is utilized for the schools. And how the rest of the money for has to go for the facilities advisory committees has to work into the all the schools and address the needs of the schools, facilities there. Some of the schools don't have a proper the lunchshades, especially from our schools. So there are multi, there is a lack of the multi use rooms. So we need to revise that budget spending properly and use that money for the facilities for the proper usage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have trustee Burke.
Thank you. So when did you say we're getting that $10 million? Is that coming soon? So that's, you know, this is a million dollar question because when we were doing the research for Measure E back in 2014, we recognized that we had billions of dollars of need for FUSD to upgrade our aging infrastructure, to modernize buildings, and of course, to transition our junior highs into a middle school model. We went out for a bond and it was 650 million. So you can see, we didn't even go out for half of what the need was. And what we have found since 2014 is that we've had a lot of escalation, as you mentioned. And partly that's been because of things that are out of our control, such as natural disasters. So the price of materials has gone up, the price of labor has gone up as other geographic areas need the resources. So we do have a citizens' bond oversight committee that helps us make sure that we are transparent in how the monies are being spent. And we have never had a failed audit. It's always been positive. And I would also say that we need to consider going out for the next school bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Prasad.
So managing contracts is is really an art and it needs a lot of experience to be able to do that. The the way some of the, if you look at a typical contract, that you get a bid and the lowest bid wins, right? Or close to the lowest bid, whatever the best bid wins. However, the cost increases because of time delays and cost increases because of changes that come into the project and cost increases because because somebody because the accountability of when a mistake is made, who is responsible? That doesn't happen, right? So so I've seen all types of mistakes in the in the way the contracts were done for, let's say, the Mission swimming pool and even even for for the Walters project that that just completed. So overall, by not having the the right set of people looking at it and and not looking at it with a critical eye that that a typical business would look at, we allow us to be played by the system and we need the the right experience on the board to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Zhang.
Hi, this is really my expertise and I am owner of an investment real estate investment company. So when it comes to budget and in my experience, actually, most time that my budget is always going a little bit more than what I anticipated. So I think it's reasonable. But if like within 5%, it's reasonable because there is always, you know, the planning goes a little bit screwed. And the and the natural disaster like COVID and everything goes up and you cannot get the materials. So those are normal, but we must identify the reason between the reasonable over budget or it's a it's a management error. So we need a chance of transparency and we need a great team to supervise, to manage those contractors. And we need multiple bids and we need also and the transparency to our stakeholders. When a stakeholder knows that we spend money well, I don't think we have a problem to ask, you know, to raise another measure, another puzzle text. And we need also need a constant communication with our stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have trustee Campbell.
Yes, this has been a very difficult bond for us to manage with management companies, people coming in and out. I appreciate the conversation about managing contracts. That's really not what the board is designed to do. That's what staff is there for us to do. We approved, we don't approve contracts, staff, we make recommendations for them to enter into contracts. We hire the best people that we know to be able to do the job because it is not our job to, as a trustee, we are an oversight. We're not administration. So but we do, we do recognize that the conditions by which we're living under with the natural disasters and equipment not being the staff, I mean, I know, I'm trying to say fast, staff, I mean, getting workers because construction workers have been very, very difficult to to get. We also have a project stabilization agreement. So we have to make sure that we hire within the stabilization stabilization agreement. So I think that we are in the mood to to look at a new bond measure next election cycle.
Thank you. Lastly, for this question, we have Mission.
If there are any voters in here or if anyone is talking to voting parents, I definitely want to mention Prop position 15. It could, there's an estimation of maybe $20 million in revenue for Fremont Unified School District, which is sorely needed. There's the 10 million that we're hoping for, trustee Burke. We desperately need that money right now and it actually would not be a one time thing, right? This is 20 million that we can continue to invest and it's so important that we have these more dependable, sustainable streams of revenues so that we can continue to invest in our facilities. Better transparency is also really huge. For me, this also comes down to developer impact fees. If our developers fill our schools, they should be funding our schools. I understand there's complaints about it not being transparent enough. And so creating a more structured systemic way that we can get developer impact fees so that they understand what's expected of them will help us do that. Better transparency also means that the community will better understand why certain decisions are made. I often hear that people are complaining about facilities funding allocation being unfair. But a lot of thought and effort from the staff goes into these decisions. So let's communicate those decisions and the data that went into them so that we can it's readable for community members and they understand so that we don't get another situation like the MSJ swimming pool, which went way over budget.
Thank you. I'll pass it off to Alvin.
Perfect. Thank you all the candidates for answering all the questions tonight collected from students across all five of Fremont Unified School to fix five high schools. We're now going to be moving on to the closing statement. For this portion, each of you will receive 90 seconds for the closing statement. And yeah, I will be calling the order and Zion will be timing. The order for the closing statement is trustee Burke, Mrs. Sun, trustee Campbell, Mr. Prasad, Mrs. Zhang, and Mrs. Kalapala. Trustee Burke, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you to Surfboard E and Gen Up for hosting this forum. As expected, the questions were thoughtful and thought provoking. I have demonstrated how important student voice is by seeking input from our students when decisions come before us. I've met with individuals and with groups of students. I've gone for walks, met at a coffee shop when we could still do those kinds of things. And more recently, have zoomed the students in their classrooms. I want to reiterate what I said in my opening statement. I want to be a part of the change in FUSD. Listening and learning has been my commitment to you thus far. Acting is the next step, whatever role is most appropriate. Whether you can vote for me or not, you are the reason why I want to continue to be on the school board. As we reevaluate curriculum with an equity lens, my commitment to honoring student voice is steadfast. We need to provide training to all stakeholders on the effects of systemic racism and evaluate how we shift our pedagogy, curriculum, and materials to be inclusive. As a parent and as an educator, I am personally and professionally committed to maintaining the quality education that has made Fremont the place to live. I hope that you will all come back to Fremont someday to make sure that our hard work today benefits all students tomorrow. I am Michelle Burke and I would be honored to have you vote for me for trustee Area Five. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, trustee Burke. Next up, Mrs. Sun.
Thank you so much, Jen Up and Surfboard E for hosting us today. As a graduate of FUSD and as a bilingual child of immigrants, I know firsthand that navigating the school system is not easy. Our parents, our teachers, and administration are all doing their best during this pandemic, but it's hard to keep everyone up to date with the nearly constant changes. So it's my job as an alum to be your voice and to be the bridge between parents and teachers to get you the help you need to be successful. But I need your help first. From my own difficult conversations over the years, I know talking to our parents isn't easy. I need you to talk to your families and encourage them to vote for issues that matter to the next generation so that we can see real tangible changes for you and for every student who comes after you. To see a school system where students have access to the mental health resources they need and to see our families represented in the history books that we study, to have school information clearly communicated and translated into the languages we speak at home. To build a district where every student is seen as who we are, where all of us can thrive, whatever that means to us. Our campaign is powered by current students, along with Mission and Irvington alums. This campaign is a love letter from us to the parents and to the teachers that raised us and to the generations of students that will come after us. Be the change we want to see and join our campaign at votelucysian.com. I'm super proud to be endorsed by former NP PFA co-president Monica Melville, as well as multiple former school board student reps. And I would be honored to earn your vote as well. You can learn more about my platform and my experience at votelucysian.com. And for those who are celebrating,祝大家中秋节快乐, happy Mid-Autumn Festival.
Thank you, Mrs. Sun. Next up, trustee Campbell.
Again, I thank you so much for hosting this. I think the the student voice is a very important voice. And I'm always open and ready to hear and to listen to what students have to say. And and not only just listen to what they have to say, but to act upon it. And I think that we have some bright and intelligent students and I look forward to being able to continue to work with you as your elected leader for trustee Area One. Having served for eight years already, I think, again, as I said in my opening statement, that I am dedicated, I am committed. I'm a strong leader to be able to hear you and to work with you and to listen to you and to help you be better as a also having four alumni students myself, I often have an opportunity to talk to my four sons about their experience going through Fremont Unified and they have had wonderful experiences. They're all doing very well. I also have two grandkids. I have a grandson who is a kindergartner and I and then my little one is going to be in kindergarten soon too. He's three now. But so he'll be in, he'll be chasing after his brother very soon. So I am invested in this community. My my grandkids go to the schools in my trustee Area One as well. So I am invested. So please join the number of endorsements that I have received, including the Teachers Association that has endorsed me, the Democratic Party, a host of elected official and friends that have endorsed me as well. And I look forward to earning your vote on November the 3rd for Desiree Campbell, trustee Area One. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Campbell. Next up, Mr. Prasad.
Yeah, so thanks, Surfboard and Gen Up for organizing this. I have been a voice of students for a long time. So if you if you look at many things at Mission, for example, all the new lockers, the TVs in classrooms, the all of these ideas did not come from this appearance. So we we actually created committees with students to come up with these solutions that had a broad impact. So I look forward to continue to work with you with your vote or your your family's votes. We we need to bring that change back into the system. So by creating a team of of students and parents and our teachers and staff, we can do the best for for all of you here. So expanding curriculum, expanding art and music and science, the little theater at Mission was renovated during my time. So I'm not supported by any of the special interests. So I'm supported by by most of my PFA colleagues from that time and a lot of the student members from that time. We we are trying to drive a change here. So if people have want to vote for status quo, they have a choice. If they want to really bring in the the right student focus and the business savviness in order to make make the most of our budgets, in order to have other most happiest students that bond with Fremont and FUSD and then come back and make this community lively again. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prasad. Next up, we have Mrs. Zhang.
You're on mute, I think.
Once again, thank you so much for sponsoring this event. And I'm so impressed again by our students and students of Fremont School District. You are my inspiration to stand out and stand up to run for the candidate of school board. And I am devoted, passionate, open minded, and also with my experience. And I want to work with you and the teachers and parents and school union to make our district, school district an invigorating places. I would just imagine in four years, I know what could be done with our joint force. And we would have excellence and equity, joint force, we would have enriched programs. And we would have a happy diversified a community and there is a reduced mental distress. And and I am looking forward to the future. And thank you so much. Again, my name is Yajin Zen, running for district four. And I'll be honored and humbled by your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. For the last candidate closing statement, Mrs. Kalapala.
Thank you, Surfboard, for conducting once again for this informative session. So our, as we know, that Board of Education plays a critical role in determining the policy that will improve the education of all our children. I am the one person who is the working between the the two different kind of the skids who are not performing the well in the classrooms, how to bring the students into the well education level and the students who are coping with academically good, but we need to bring the students with the overall growth. So that is like bringing the leadership qualities, bringing the equity in the students. And we need to encourage the resources where the student can be ready for the 21st century education and for the jobs. So we need the leaders who can think the have the longer vision for the next 10 years, how we can make these students into the next generation builders. So if I elected as a member of the Fremont Board of Education, I will ask depth questions about policy and programs. So that way, as a community, understand the value they will bring to the classroom. So I will increase the proposal, new initiatives to improve the education to our children. So although budget season is tougher each year, so I believe together we can create solutions, creative solution to address those challenges while maintaining the superior quality of education we have come to expect. So I'm Jan C. Kalapala. Once again, I ask your vote for November 3rd and I'm humbled and thank you for the time you have given me this evening. Thank you all and thank you for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you all the candidates for coming out here this evening and thank you all the attendees for tuning in to the Fremont School Board Candidate Town Hall hosted by Surfboard E and Jenna Fremont. You know, everyone that showed up today and even all the candidates that are running on behalf of all the students that helped organize this, we just want to give you guys a big round of applause. I mean, education is truly the cornerstone for a lot of societal foundations, right? A lot of the inequities that we face and a lot of interdisciplinary issues can be addressed if education equity is fixed. If you guys want to know some quick facts, not only are school boards responsible for our futures and our education, there are 14,000 school districts in the United States. They're governed by more than 95,000 school board members. And every year, they direct more than $600 billion in school funds. California's CDE budget is 85 billion. That's crazy. That's like as much as some of the biggest That's like as much as some of the biggest tech companies in the world. I mean, the scope of education is massive, and we educate more than 50 million students. But there's a problem of the 45% voters that turn out to vote, that are registered to vote in US elections, only 5% to 10% end up voting for their school board trustees. And that's a big problem. You know, you can't just vote for the presidential candidate, the senatorial candidate, the congressional candidate. Because these down ballot, down ballot elections like school board affect you so much more on a personal daily basis than higher level federal federal races. And so I just want to applaud everyone and all the candidates for stepping and running today, stepping up to run for a position that will represent all of FUSD's 34,000 diverse student voices. So thank you, thank you, thank you so much. I'll pass it on to Zion.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't have said it better. Alvin really hit all the points. Thank you, everyone, for attending all of the candidates. Thank you, everyone who was watching. It's awesome to know that our community is very active in our schools, our school district. I highly encourage everyone to use their voice, attend board meetings, submit public comment, really make sure that you are involved in your district because the community is a driving factor in change in our school districts. Once again, thank you for coming. Thank you, all of the board members, if you would like to, or the candidates, sorry. If you would like to learn more about the candidates, you can go check out the screen that Alvin is sharing and their websites. And lastly, sorry for going over time. Make sure to vote. It's very important that you get your vote out on November 3rd. So thank you, everyone, and I think that concludes our town hall.